Very good. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order, a school committee meeting, January 6th, 2023. Our first item on the agenda is to approve our agenda, which is a simple agenda, which is a deliberation and vote on the position of the superintendent. Does anyone have any changes or deletions to make to that? Hearing none, we'll move on. I'd like to welcome everyone to today's meeting, our school committee members and our viewing audience. Thank you all for making the time to get together for this important meeting today. I'd like to make a few comments about our work today. First, I'd like to thank our superintendent finalist candidates who we'll be discussing today, Dr. Peter Cushing, Ms. Nan Murphy, and Dr. Peter Burrows, for expressing their interest in becoming the next superintendent of Milton Public Schools. We've enjoyed meeting them all and getting to know about their backgrounds, their wealth of experience, and their visions for what they might bring to us as a leader of Milton Public Schools. It's been an exciting time for all of us to think about the future of our schools with a new leader. The goal of our discussion of the finalists today, finalist candidates, is to arrive at an initial consensus about one person who has the support of a majority of school committee members. Once we feel that we've arrived at a consensus, we'll make a motion and take a vote for the appointment of a new superintendent, subject to the successful negotiations of a contract. I believe that it would be best for our schools and our town if we can arrive at a unanimous vote. However, as chair, I declare that the appointment of the superintendent will require a minimum of a simple majority, of four or five minutes votes cast for any candidate, which is the typical simple majority that we use in all of our other matters as school committee here in Milton. While there will be no opportunity for public comment during our deliberations today, we thank you all for taking part in this important work. We've had a number of opportunities for community input into our superintendent search process. Many people attended our focus groups and responded to our survey about our district's leadership needs. We had 11 people who volunteered to serve on the screening committee, who screened 19 applicants and recommended our finalist candidates to us. Many people attended our candidate receptions at our schools earlier this week, and many watched our interviews on Wednesday. Finally, we encourage the Milton Public Schools community to email us to express their opinions and share their advice. And I'd like to thank everyone who took part in this important effort. Yesterday and this morning, we received many thoughtful emails that reflected serious and heartfelt consideration by those who took the time to write. It reinforced for us what an important decision this is for our entire community. This morning, we'll take turns discussing our thoughts for as long as it takes us to arrive at consensus. I'll do my best to recognize each school committee member who wants to share their thoughts, giving preference to members who have not yet spoken, and we'll just keep going around for as long as we feel it's necessary to arrive at a consensus. And we'll try, let's try to use the raise hand function in Zoom, and we'll see how that works. And if that seems to not be working, we'll make a change. It's a little easier in person for this type of thing. After our vote, I will either, I will mute my microphone and turn off the camera on my computer, and we'll call the appointed finalist to see if they will accept our offer and begin negotiations. Immediately following our vote, we will adjourn to executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A2. And finally, before we begin the discussion about our next superintendent, I'd like to caution you all about the nature of the comments about the candidates. Each of our candidates have subjected themselves to the challenge of becoming a public figure during this process. Once we announced our finalist candidates on December 21st, 2022, the rest of our search process must be in public. Everything that we say is a matter of public record. Praise for the candidates and criticism of them become available for anyone to access. Even our well-intended remarks may be repeated, reported, and even taken out of context whenever a future employer considers one of our candidates in the future. For those reasons, please use your best judgment and discretion in explaining your preferences and telling the public why you support a particular individual and/or why you are not supporting others. Negative comments may represent your opinion, and which are your right to present can attach to candidates as fact and damage their reputations. So I'd like to make a motion that we proceed to the discussion related to the superintendency and appointment of a superintendent of schools. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote. Member Vargis. A member Ross Denny.
Yes.
Dr. Carol.
Yes.
Dr. Miranda.
Yes.
Member White.
Yes.
And Chair Rosemarin, yes. So I declare the matter is appropriately before the school committee. And let's begin our discussion. As I see Member White's hand up, do you like to go first?
That would be great, thank you. First of all, I want to thank all my school committee members, fellow school committees, for all of their work during these last period of time. And specifically, Ada, thank you so much for your leadership, your coordination, and your communication during this time. You've really made us all very proud. So, you know, I've been thinking 24/7 about all of our finalists, their interviews, their recommendations, going over all of the references. And, you know, I think we have three very strong, very capable candidates, and all of them could lead our system well. But I kept coming back to one particular candidate that I think has the current experience that would serve our district best during this time for our district. I mean, with the pandemic still around and with all of the issues that our students and our faculty have faced, I just think that we really could use a leader who is really strategic, intelligent, experienced, who has, willing to make a long-term commitment to our town and to our community and to our district. So I think that I am feeling strongly that the candidacy of Dr. Burrows is the best fit for our district at this time. And when I was reviewing his, all his materials, and particularly rereading the references that were given for him, they talk about that he is a, they talk about his leadership abilities of rethinking and reshaping educational experiencing, creating access for all students, the vision of success with transparency, clarity, and direction. They talk about his valuing student voice and building strategic plans, which is so important for us. And I really feel like several of the comments talked about him being a transformational systems thinker, the real deal kind of leader, listening to all stakeholders, visible, accessible in the buildings. He doesn't just sit in his office. He really builds relationships with folks. So I think that based on all of those qualities and characteristics that he possesses and his dedication to DEIB, I think he would be my choice and the best fit for our system. And I really, maybe it's a little sentimental of me, but I really liked that he was interested in Milton. I mean, he chose to apply here. He wants to come. He hasn't applied to other places. And I liked that sort of focus on Milton, and that was something that, you know, I kind of, maybe it's again sentimental of me, but I kind of really liked that, that he really wanted to come to us. And I sort of thinking that he would be the best fit for us right now. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Member White. Member Vargis?
Thank you, Ada. I want to first of all, thank all of you. The amount of time and hours and time away from your families that you have put towards this the last two months, like kind of feels like a blur a little bit, but I know a lot of hours and a lot of work and a lot of reading and a lot of researching has gone into it. So I commend all of you, and I'm very proud to be part of this team. I am very proud to have been on the original screening committee. The, you know, and even last night, I was reading the references and how thoughtfully you put those together. Member Ross Denny and member Dr. Miranda and Member White is just amazing. It was like, really does feel like we landed on three very strong candidates. And I am so proud that I was like, wow, I can't believe, you know, we are in this position where we can, you know, it's like, we can go at, like, we are in a really good spot, and I feel very happy about that. And I am very thankful to all of you. Chair Rosemarin, I am so appreciative of your dedication to this for keeping us, you know, on target every single time. I know where to look. I mean, you are phenomenal, and I really, really appreciate your leadership through this process, and I am very grateful. I also am very grateful to the community. I am, you know, having been in this role my first year, I have learned something that was really inspiring through this process, which is how much our community cares. You know, we all care, and there might be disagreements. We might, you know, not always agree on things, but at the end of the day, we are a very caring community, and I am very grateful to be part of this community. So I appreciate all of that. And, you know, through this process, you know, I had the opportunity, as I said, I went through the initial screening committee. I had an opportunity to meet with all three candidates who made it to our finalists. I had the opportunity to meet them at the meet and greets, which was also really informative for me because, you know, we can, you know, people can say whatever they want, but when you, when you see them and how they interact with, with the community, with parents, answer the questions, and what they say in their mannerisms and body language, there's so much goes into that. And I'm, I've always been a listener. I'm always been an observer. It's what I do in my day job. I'm always looking at things from different vantage points. So I like to place myself in different shoes and see how is this going to work, right? So I appreciated how thoughtful everybody was, you know, in terms of how they responded to the community, how they answered questions, how they interacted. All of those things really, really went into my decision today. And it also makes it really hard because I thought everybody did a phenomenal job. And then, you know, and the final interview was also great because that was kind of the second to last piece of the puzzle, which is how, how did they do? Like, how would they work with this committee right here? So that was also really helpful for me. And then, of course, the last piece of that will be to hear what my other school committee members feel. So with that, I have kind of narrowed it down to two people. I have a very hard time, you know, picking one person because I thought these two people were equally great. They brought different things to the table. And the other big part that I took into consideration was the focus groups that I listened in on and also the survey results. I thought it was really important to hear from the community. I also read all the emails that were coming in and, you know, including the ones that came in late last night and this morning. So it was very, very helpful to kind of help me get to this point. And the two finalists, based on what I think Milton needs, from everything that I've heard, everything that the feedback we've received, would be Dr. Burrows and Ms. Nan Murphy. And I thought both of them did a phenomenal job. And I'm going to go into a little bit, no particular order, but in terms of what I really liked about each candidate. I met Ms. Murphy in the original interview. I was really, really blown away by her commitment to academic rigor and achievement for all students. You know, she looked at data in a way that was, you know, if the high achievers aren't growing equally as the ones that are in, you know, really need the push, then we are doing something wrong. So really looking at data and actually doing something about it. I thought that was really brilliant. I also loved how she, the work that she did in Lowell, transforming that school within one year with no resources. You know, I also loved her commitment to special education and building a school in Lowell and, you know, bringing the students back into the district. I thought that was really, really impressive. Her ability to communicate was phenomenal. I felt like I was, instead of taking notes, I was listening, and I really loved that, the way she captivated the audience. So, and just, just again, you know, her leadership style is very different than Dr. Burrows. But then getting back to Dr. Burrows, I thought he was, I was really loved his DEI statement. I, I loved, you know, when you look at, it is, it's a tough topic to write about. And it's like, how do you take something that's so, you know, like, how do you take it and really just make it sound so inspiring? And I really, really admired that about him. I loved his lived experiences in other countries, which I thought really brought this different point of view. You know, him working with a tribal community in India. I mean, you know, it's, it's not easy. So I love how he had that background coming in, bringing the IB program into, into his current district, which was phenomenal. I know none of these things are easy to do. So I appreciate he has a very different leadership style, and I thought that was very valuable too. So this idea of trying to find common ground was great. And I think both, coming back to it, I think both of these finalists really bring something that Milton needs, which is, you know, we talk about having our strategic plan. And as a school committee member, I find a lot of value in our strategic plan. But when I, you know, and I go and sit in the audience with the other parents, I might say, hey, these concepts seem a little abstract. How are we going to get there? And I feel like both of these leaders, in their different styles of leadership, can get us there, you know? So I really appreciate both of that. And I'm going to stop there, but I would love to hear from my other committee members how they feel. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Vargis. Dr. Carol.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Member White and Member Vargis, for your comments. I want to start by just echoing what you said, in particular, to thank you, Chair Rosemarin, for your leadership through this process, and all of you on my school committee colleagues. I, as time-intensive and challenging as it has been, I do really appreciate how we have worked as a team, and I share the sense of pride and appreciation for, for that. I am gonna look at some notes, so please pardon that. I, I am very tired. I couldn't sleep last night because I was thinking about this. So I'm gonna rely on what I've set out to say. But the main thing at the outset for me, which echoes what we've already heard, is that a bottom line for me coming into this discussion is that I do feel at peace and I feel confident because I agree that we have attracted a really exceptional group of three high caliber finalists. And I want to say that I, I feel optimistic for the future of Milton Public Schools, no matter what we decide this morning. Whatever happens, our next superintendent will be an experienced instructional leader who sees the diversity of Milton as a strength and who gets that it will only be through delivering on equity, inclusion, and social emotional learning that we will achieve true academic excellence for all students, which is what we need to do, and that's why we're all here, obviously. It's true that all three of the finalists each have very different strengths, and they have different growth areas. And so I think that's why it's been interesting to see, like, a range of feedback, quite honestly, from a lot of different people that I really respect have arrived at different conclusions about who they feel would be the best fit for Milton. And I think that just speaks to the high caliber of our candidates, but also the fact that they're all different. And as you were just saying, Member Vargis, they would lead in different ways, but hopefully get us to the place that we need to go. I want to also echo, I'm deeply grateful to so many community members who took a lot of time to watch the interviews and share thoughtful, detailed feedback about how they perceived the candidates. It was really helpful to me to read through so many sets of analysis where especially the many of you who went sort of through all three to share how you perceived them, their strengths, their growth areas. And I really sincerely appreciated that. So thank you for participating in our process and making it stronger through that. Before I talk about a particular candidate, I want to just also say that I'm confident, and I look forward to us rallying behind whomever gets selected, both as a school committee and as a community. I wanted to just share a quick quote from one of the emails we received that really resonated with me. A community member wrote to us, quote, "Whomever you pick, I ask that this committee afford them the opportunity to make necessary changes that the district needs, even if it may not align with any personal agendas." End quote. And I would add to that, I hope the community, in addition to this committee, you know, affords the, the next superintendent that kind of goodwill and grace to allow them to come in with their leadership and, you know, have a strong start in Milton. So I'm really looking forward to that, whatever happens. All right, so enough with all that. I'm gonna speak for a minute about Nan Murphy in particular. I found her to be the clearest communicator. And I really appreciated the way she articulated that it's the district's responsibility, and it's on the superintendent to ensure that the community understands what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how we're doing it. That was really compelling to me, the way she laid that out. That includes the commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging work that is embedded in how she approaches her leadership. So I just wanted to highlight that that came across strongly to me. Secondly, I felt that she's the strongest instructional leader in a couple of key areas for Milton. She really understands early literacy, which I think is top of mind for many of us right now, especially in the context of unfinished learning. She also, as you mentioned, Member Vargis, has a background in specialty in special education. Her experience as a turnaround principal in Lowell is really impressive to me. The fact that she took a level three school to level one in four years, that result speaks for itself, and that could only happen through the strength of her leadership as a principal of that school. She was elevated within the district of Lowell several times based on the strength of the success of her leadership. And that included then elevating her to the statewide opportunity to bring her strengths beyond the district of Lowell. So I was impressed by that trajectory. She hasn't been a superintendent yet, but I strongly believe that where she will be a superintendent soon, and wherever she ends up being a superintendent, will really benefit from many of these strengths. That would be, I think, really relevant to our context in Milton. And her leadership in that urban context, to me, is really valuable. I should also say, I was compelled by her, like, her why Milton was really focused on our strategic plan. And she described the pillars of our strategic plan as the combination of who she is as an educator. I really felt that was important. And so for all of those reasons, I, I think I was, in the end, when I add everything up, really excited by the possibilities of Nan Murphy as our next superintendent. But as I close my initial comments here, I'll reiterate that I found a lot in our other two candidates to be excited about as well. In particular, with Dr. Burrows, I understand that a number of our Milton Public Schools leadership team were compelled by his candidacy. And I really respect that point of view and preference and perspective. I also understand that many people are compelled by the fact that he is the only sitting superintendent in our candidate finalist pool, and that does mean something. It definitely means a lot. I just also think that there are some unique aspects to Ms. Murphy's leadership in terms of the setting and the context of her success as a leader so far that, in my mind, you know, present unique strengths. So I'll, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Dr. Carol. Member Ross Denny.
Good morning, everyone. And I don't want to belabor the points about thanking people, but I know that most of the public acknowledges that arriving at this place today took a Herculean effort by both the community and the school committee. And I thank you all because I came in, in the second phase of the screening, and was appreciative, appreciative of the effort that it took to get the finalists that we have. And I want to echo what all of my colleagues have shared, that we're in a fortunate position to be able to choose from several very highly qualified candidates that can meet our needs. This has been a very difficult decision because we had to weigh the strengths and the growth areas of each of these candidates. And they're both, they're all coming from very different places in their work. But it was really important to me to align what their strengths. But it was really important to me to align what their strengths are with where I believe Milton is going and the accomplishments that we've made in the past several years. Ideally, we'd have a candidate that can meet us where we are. We have a new strategic plan. We have an energized leadership team with people who are working under one goal now, which is to achieve our strategic plan and to address the unfinished learning that our students have. But we have external needs also. We have to have people who know how to navigate change, but also navigating change in a very highly political environment. For those of us who came from the private sector, change management is difficult if you don't know what you're, how to go about doing that work. But when you add the side of public education that has public scrutiny and being able to execute at scale and work in a community for a prolonged period of time and earning the trust of the community in order to make accomplishments. For people who have not worked long in education, you should know it's extremely difficult. I've worked with school districts all around the country that have attempted to do many change management initiatives. And most people don't reach the success that they have prescribed because they haven't been able to get the buy-in of the community. They have not moved the community with them. They didn't understand the value of communication and marketing and actually just knowing how to do your job well as an instructional leader. You will find in research that there are many, many ways to turn around a school. And there are people who've done it and have done it more than once, but there are very few people that move districts at scale. It's a very rare achievement. And which leads me to the attributes that were important to me when selecting a candidate. There are two candidates that I recommend. The first one, I would please to say that I think that Dr. Peter Burrows has demonstrated at scale his ability to work in a community. While conducting his reference checks, I learned that he worked in two districts on opposite sides of the country but had consistent behaviors and consistent results. He has exceptional change management skills. And his ability to understand how to work with various stakeholder groups, ensuring that they have a voice at the table and still getting them to move as an entire community is something that very few people, much less candidates, can say that they've been able to accomplish. He was able to convince several school boards because in his initial arrival in Vermont, each one of his schools and a group of elementary schools were all different districts. And the state had initiated a plan to consolidate those districts. And based on his references, his district was the first to vote to consolidate. He also decided to, after going through a cycle of inquiry, after a whole district strategic plan had been implemented, he met with the stakeholders in his community and basically articulated that for you to achieve the goals that you want to accomplish, I think the International Baccalaureate Program would be ideal. And for those who are unfamiliar with the program, it's an exceptional program that's been implemented in only a handful of places. And when students, it's more rigorous than advanced placement. It's K-12. And they have very specific theories on what children should be able to know and do by the time they graduate. And they have a very rigorous onboarding process and a very rigorous process for students to graduate with an IB certificate, to make a long story short. And to convince an entire community that that is the right thing. When many districts struggled to implement in one school, his references talked about how he engaged various stakeholder groups and took his time to make sure that everyone understood what they were buying into and was convinced of the value before they went to a vote. And when I think about our fiscal needs, whether it's with our operational override or override for our school buildings, having someone who can get stakeholders on board and has demonstrated on more than one occasion their capacity to do that is a very, as I said, it's a very rare skill and Milton would be the better for having someone that can do that. I also want to talk about Peter Cushing and how genuine and authentic he was in his interview and the fact that he is also working at scale in a district that's bigger than Milton. He was able to articulate one of the kernels that stand in the way of progress in terms of DEI work. He talked about the fact that it's not a political end, it's an ethical issue. And what someone would want for their own child, sorry. Did I hear someone? What someone would want for their own student, they should want for all students. And he articulated the fact that he recognizes he has agency to enter into these conversations more so than others have. And being able to even recognize that that is a challenge and that it's something that needs to be overcome by working with the community shows that he realizes just saying that you're capable of doing it doesn't mean that you've actually achieved the results at scale. He also talked about creating several models for supporting principals and aspiring leaders and recognizing that in many cases, it's very easy in a district to talk about operations and not the difficult conversations about instruction. For those who may not work in education, operations usually has a very finite instructional practice that you're following. But when you're talking about instruction for students, there are many research-based strategies, but in most cases, you will not see them in schools. But being able to acknowledge that it's difficult and still have those conversations and try to work with leaders across multiple schools, not a single school, is a trait and attribute that you don't see often. He also articulated the importance of being able to shield staff from the noise that keeps them and distracts them from doing their work. It's something that it's really hard for people to recognize that, you know, when we do our work, you know, I'm at my desk, I have my colleagues, I have my customers. Our educators have that same audience, but it's very public. And being able to create a space where people can work together and make progress is something that Peter Cushing mentioned that I think is valuable. And last but not least, he, just as Dr. Burrows mentioned, is the ability to communicate and being able to get people to understand what you stand for and buy into it. There are many people who extremely articulate at saying what you should do. But then what are the results once you do it? And if we can't see that you've been able to accomplish results at scale, what happens when you come to a Milton that has six schools, a very diverse community, and not necessarily the buy-in that we would have anticipated to implement any of the initiatives we think are important? So with all that said, I appreciate the fact that all of us are coming at this from a different place and a different set of experiences. But I do believe that ultimately, if we picked any one of these candidates, Milton would be in a wonderful position. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Member Russ Denny. Dr. Miranda, would you like to?
Sure. And I would apologize ahead of time, I'm actually not feeling well. And I also haven't slept because this is, I think, such an important decision. And I've gone back and forth all night. And I do want to echo, without going into too much, the gratitude that I have for each and every single one of you. In particular, for those of you who served on the screening committee, reviewing nineteen applications is not easy. That was a lot of work. And I appreciate the dedication and the commitment that you made to make sure that the three candidates that we interviewed aligned with what we need in Milton in varying ways. So I do think that this decision is hard because the options we have before us are very strong options. So thank you, thank you for that. I also want to thank the community, in particular, those who took the time to listen to the interviews and give us your thoughts. I take that input very seriously. I think it's important to wrestle with the varying points of views and take that into account as we arrive at a decision. So thank you. And even to that last email that came in this morning, I really appreciate that. I think I must have checked my email every couple of minutes just to make sure I wasn't missing someone's feedback. I also, you know, it's, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. But I want to go back. I think I am very much, very similar to Member Vargis. You know, sort of, I have a very, a strong position on two of the candidates. And for varying reasons, I do think that each and every single one of them brings in their particular professional experience as well as their professional values that I think resonated with me. I think Dr. Cushing, I did appreciate the way that he was able to communicate and explain to us the work that he did in Worcester. The work in rural settings is difficult. And the way that he went by and really speaking to the work and how he handled issues of diversity, not in the same way that we think about issues of diversity in an urban setting or in Milton, because, you know, we are still a suburb, very different than a fully urban setting. He, in the way that he handled that work, I think, is commendable because there was a lot there. And he was able to also do that change management at the school level, which I think is hard. Turnaround work is not easy. And to be able to achieve that, it requires strategy, requires the North Star in that commitment. And I think we saw that. I also think he was unapologetic in his view around the importance to hold our focus on social emotional well-being and academic excellence together. I think that I really respected that. And really do think that that stood out for me. However, I do go back to the other two. And for me, Ms. Murphy was just a fantastic communicator. I do think that she was crisp. She gave us very concrete examples. I also did the references for Ms. Murphy. And when you start hearing the same things from people, you realize that there's something there. There's a theme in how they approach their work. Servant leadership is what I heard. It is how she described her leadership style in service of students, in service of parents, in service of teachers. I think also there is a depth of experience in instructional leadership, which as we think about the recovery, right, of the learning losses that we've had because of the pandemic, because of unfinished learning, I do think that we would have in her a leader who could zero in and focus and identify exactly those areas where we need to double down in in order to get to the academic outcomes that we want for all of our students. That came out very clearly, and it's what I heard. The other piece that I wanted to lift up in terms of Ms. Murphy that I thought was very important was the fact that in every conversation I had, I also heard that limited resources did not stop her from seeking that North Star and knowing where she wanted to go. So instead of like, you know, saying, well, I guess we can't do that, said, all right, what exactly do you need to do your job? Right? And I, I, I'm going to take it upon myself to find that. And that didn't just say that, but also delivered. And I think that's important too, right? You can't just go around saying, you've got to show it. And then it came back with, there's a grant opportunity, there's this, there's that. And so I think that is critical, right? Because we know that we are, we are a district that needs more resources in order to achieve the excellence that we want in the social emotional well-being of our kids. So I do, you know, I was taken by that. I also appreciated her commitment to mentorship. You know, to really being able to think, and Dr. Cushing spoke to this as well, building that bench and really thinking about, how do I look within the district to find the leaders, to find even the potential leaders, those folks? And I think this is key, it's a gift to be able to identify folks who may not think that they are leaders. But you see something in them, you nurture it, and you bring them up and make sure that they realize their potential. And I think that's important, particularly in this day and time where we have so many exhausted educators. We need to pump them up. We need to make sure we build from within as well as attract. I also appreciated her commitment to our strategic plan, spoke very clearly that it's our plan, it's our vision that she found compelling in terms of our district. Now let me move to Dr. Barrows. Dr. Barrows, I think, has an advantage. Dr. Barrows comes to this opportunity with ten years of experience as a superintendent. He has led change, not only at the school level, but at the district level. And as Member, excuse me, I'm sorry, I told you I'm tired. As a Member Russ Denny said, you know, change management, particularly at a large systems level, is hard. I was very taken by the approach that, as I was reading again his packet last night, comes through of all the steps that went into going from where the district was in Vermont to where the district is now and the adopting of, you know, the program that he brought in, the IB program. I think that it speaks volumes to me, speaks volumes of the ability to take something on and really develop the commitment and the support from stakeholders to be able to do that. I think also, I don't, you know, I think there is a commitment there to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging as well. I think there is a whole effort right now to try to, if I read, you know, if I sort of remember correctly, in terms of Vermont, and trying to sort of bring that lens to all the work in the district right now, and he's leading that. I think there is a commitment there. So I share all of that to say that I see the value in all these three leaders. But I am, sort of after, you know, poring through the emails, poring through what we've heard, I am leaning towards two candidates. And that is Ms. Murphy and Dr. Barrows. And really have gone back and forth. I've looked at all the focus groups, notes, and the survey again and really trying to figure out, you know, what the best, what's the leader that's going to get us, not that we're stuck, but I think we are sort of, we're not making sort of the progress that we could make because I don't think, you know, we need someone to help us communicate in a way that helps us realize that there's more alignment than misalignment. I think we, I think as Member Vargis said, we all care. And I think we want the best for our students. And in that, when I think of that, I do think Dr. Barrows would just kind of pick up and get us there, right? Like there, but at the same time, I do wrestle. And I heard Dr. Carol, she said the, you know, the what, the how, and the why. That stayed with me. And that was Ms. Murphy, that recognized that not everyone's going to get on the train at the same time. And sometimes you have to go back and explain. And that, I think, is what keeps bringing me back to her. But I think we would be well-served by either one of them.
Good, thank you, Dr. Miranda. You know, we have, we have a good, a good problem here. We have three really good candidates. So we knew, we knew- Um, so we knew, we knew this wasn't going to be easy. Um, um, and, and it's so important. Um, so, um, I appreciate all the that you have all shared and, um, uh, I, I agree that, that all three candidates had, had some wonderful strengths that got them to this point in, in our process and, um, and we would be very fortunate, uh, to be led by, by any, any of them. Um, I, um, decided when, when I was sort of concluding my review, going back through packages and references and, um, and all of the feedback and comments that we've gotten, um, uh, this week that, um, to go back to our selection criteria that we posted in our original posting, um, to kind of think about each of the candidates in relation to those selection criteria. So I'm going to just try to walk you through quickly, um, what, what I saw and, and a lot of it will be echoing things that have already been said, um, but the, um, first was outstanding communication, interpersonal and management skills, including change management, navigating complexity and organization, finances, budget, um, building relationships with local government leaders, um, and, uh, employee unions. And, um, you know, as, as discussed, all three have led important change in their districts. Um, um, the, um, both, um, Dr. Cushing and Ms. Murphy have led a change in turnaround schools, which is um, a, a very impressive accomplishment and very challenging accomplishment in, um, uh, the face of limited finances and, and mixed support and, and, and um, all of the, the things that go into, um, trying to bring along a, a school that is in need. And they, they showed their, their strengths in, in accomplishing that. And, um, in terms of, um, communication, uh, Dr. Burrows, uh, really uh, impressed me talking about the importance of communication and, and I really made me think about Milton, about the importance of our communication, both internally and externally and how, um, how he brought in a communications director. We have a fabulous communications director and, and, uh, perhaps just need more time for that person. Um, to, to, you know, just talking about the importance of sharing our message uh, with the community and with our, our, um, internal staff. Um, and how important that is to help move the district forward. The next is understanding of school finance, facilities, capital projects, local state legislative process, uh, processes and, and command of Massachusetts, uh, curriculum, education policies and laws. And, um, Dr. Burrows has led budget work, um, even when he didn't have a budget director. He, he learned a lot and, and moved that forward. Um, he is coming to us from outside of Massachusetts. So there will be more of a learning curve for him to learn about Massachusetts educational law. Um, but he's already gotten resources from Massachusetts School Superintendents. And, uh, describes himself as a, a quick study. And one of his references, um, confirmed that and saying how he got up to speed quickly and became a voice that, that people could trust, uh, to study and understand the issues. And Dr. Uh, Cushing and Ms. Murphy developed budgets for schools, their schools as principals. And their portions of the budgets, uh, for their current districts as, as assistant superintendents. Uh, uh, instructional leadership is the next area with experienced leading um, uh, variety of initiatives related to the three pillars of our strategic plan. Um, and, uh, Ms. Murphy, um, as, as my colleagues have, have already mentioned is, is I, I think just a, an outstanding instructional leader. Um, and, and I found that very inspiring, that the mentoring and coaching, the strategic planning um, that she has done and supporting, um, people um, moving along in their career and developing their skills. Um, I felt that she was the most concrete about that and, and um, she was honest, specific and brave in talking about some of the challenges that she uh, faced and, and, um, I, I really appreciated that. Uh, Dr. Cushing, um, uh, really impressed me about um, what a culture builder he is and his commitment to building culture, uh, as part of, of his DEIB work and, um, and I, I, I just felt that through and through, um, and his strategic planning that he developed the first strategic plan from Edford and that he took a courageous approach, um, as, um, to anti-racist, um, education and to DEIB. Uh, Dr. Burrows, um, is, is working with his district to revise their strategic plan, uh, to incorporate an equity lens, which um, is, is, you know, commendable that, that, you know, showing the, the um, sort of evergreen na- na- nature to strategic plans, which is consistent with how uh, we've operated with our strategic planning in Milton and, and that, you know, as time goes on, you need to adapt your plan to um, incorporate new and, and, um, new developments and, and, um, things that, that we need to work on. Um, and he also talked about how, um, a- and I think all of our candidates did talk about DEIB and academic excellence as not being mutually exclusive. And, um, I, I felt really good about the fact that, that we were all kind of on the same page with that. Um, and, um, it was, it was really important, I think, from some of the comments that we received yesterday, um, Dr. Burrows' message seems to have resonated with folks in the community. It came through with, uh, others in a way that I think we've struggled to do. Uh, and I don't exactly know, you know, how, how that worked, but, um, it, it impressed me. Um, so I think, I think we really do have three very strong, uh, candidates and all of whom, uh, would be, um, uh, wonderful in moving, moving our district forward. Um, but at this time, I would say that I, um, uh, express a preference for Dr. Burrows. Um, and there are a number of reasons why, um, you know, as, as we've talked about, um, that he does have the, the proven leadership, uh, role as a superintendent. And I think that Milton needs someone with this experience, um, at this time, uh, to inspire and lead our very strong leadership team, um, who have just been amazing and, and keeping our district going after uh, a number of challenging transitions at Central Office over the past couple of years. Um, his, um, is, as I mentioned, the DEI and academic excellence as not being mutually exclusive, um, is very consistent with, um, our work here in Milton. Um, his, I, I felt that his, uh, approach to his leadership was more strategic while others were more tactical. And, and I, I think both are important, but I think in a superintendent, having someone with that strategic view is, is really important. Um, the focus on importance of communication, both internally and externally, as I mentioned. Uh, I think Dr. Burrows is analytical, uh, systems thinker. He anticipates and plans for the steps it takes for meaningful change and has shown his commitment to sticking with those processes that can take time and has shown his, his commitment to those changes in his current role, um, and, and staying with it long enough um, to, to actually accomplish those, those changes. Um, he has proven leadership in Vermont. He's the head of the Vermont Superintendent Association. Uh, has provided leadership there to other superintendents. And he's the co-director of the Snelling Vermont School Leadership Project, where he, um, works with a team to mentor other superintendents across Vermont. So in that regard, I think he, he's shown a, a leadership of leaders in Vermont, um, which is important. When talking about our DEIB work, um, I, I was impressed with his referring to um, looking at what are the levers, um, that we might use to make the changes, the important changes that we need to make. And that, how he would begin with the results of the equity audit. Um, and I think that, um, that report, um, we've had it for a couple of years now. The findings of that report and the recommendations. Um, and, and we've accomplished, um, many of those goals, but I think there's still more there that we can work with. Um, and I appreciate his, his looking to that as, as a place to start. Um, he's been described as being a grounding influence, um, and unflappable. Um, I've heard from, um, someone on our leadership team who felt they could go to him for advice, which, which is a wonderful thing for our, our already very strong leadership team. And he is willing to leave a fairly comfortable position in Vermont after 10 years as superintendent, really doing a lot of the hard work, um, to accomplish the changes that, that, um, were deemed necessary there and, and, but that he is seeking the opportunity for more challenges and, and especially with diversity that, that we have here in Milton. Um, our, our community responses in the last day in response to hearing um, all of the, um, interviews, um, came out strongly. Um, um, for our candidates, there were more who supported Dr. Burrows. Um, but they all, um, pointed at, at many of the features of the, all the candidates that, um, that were already mentioned by my colleagues. Um, and, um, uh, and finally, um, as Member White said, I, you know, I was impressed with the fact that he really wants to be in Milton, that he's only applied here. Um, and his understanding of how families move here because of our schools. Um, um, spoke to me that as, as someone who understands um, what, what we're, what we're looking for and what, what Milton is all about. Um, so. So there we are, and I guess, I guess the, you know, we need to keep working because we're, we're, we've got a number of different, um, uh, preferences in play here. Um, and, you know, pass it back to anyone who uh, feels that they, they would like to discuss further their thoughts or after hearing everyone speak today. Um, is there anyone who'd like to speak in our second round? Member of our keys.
Um, thank you, um, so much, Chair Rosemarin. I think this was really helpful for me to hear everybody's point of view and, um, on the different candidates. And I think, like I said, mentioned earlier, that was the last piece of the puzzle that I really needed to make my decision between the two finalists that I had, um, recommended. And, um, I think based on hearing what everyone had to say, and they were all different, and it was all really helpful to me. And as, and I mentioned earlier, I really value your feedback and input. Um, we all have different strengths and so I appreciate how well we can work well with each other. And as with that, I do have to say, like, when we were all sitting at the table the other day, um, with Dr. Burrows, I really appreciated the, you know, the camaraderie that, and I saw us like working together, you know, in that moment. And, uh, that really meant a lot to me. You know, we were chuckling, there was conversation, there was like, it was lightheartedness, there was relationship building in that 75 minutes, and I thought that was huge. Um, so I see, really already see us, you know, in that moment, we, we built something. And I look forward to more of that. So my recommendation would be Dr. Peter Burrows.
Okay, thank you, Member of our keys. Anyone else? Member White.
So maybe we could take like an initial vote right now just to see where we're at and then proceed after that if we're, if we're in a tie or, um, we need to like rethink our, our voting.
Um, yeah, I'd like to, to wait a little bit if we can. Um, I, I think, I think we're, um, we're getting there. Um, but I'd, I'd like to just, um, I see Dr. Carol has her hand up and, and let's see, let's, you know, let's keep talking for a little bit, but thank you, uh, Member White. Uh, Dr. Carol?
Thanks. Um. I guess I just want to speak up now since, um, having listened to the rest of you all share, which I also really appreciated. It, you know, clearly Dr. Burrows is a common denominator across, um, the five of you. And I just would like to say that, um, you know, as I mentioned at the beginning and end of my comments coming into this discussion, I already was, you know, quite aware of the many strengths that he brings. Um. Listening to the rest of you speak, I think, um, I was reminded of additional things that, you know, had not been top of mind for me necessarily, but like in particular, um, Chair Rosemarin, the recalling the way that he had, he was the, the, the finalist who identified, um, the school quality review as an existing resource and roadmap, uh, which is a really important, uh, thing that, that he did pick up on. Um, among other pieces that you've all shared. So I guess I just wanted, um, I appreciate that we're continuing the conversation, but as we move toward a vote, I just wanted to share that, um, I continue to, you know, really believe in Ms. Murphy and, um, her future as a superintendent. And at the same time, I can definitely support a choice to, um, move forward with Dr. Burrows. So I just wanted to put that out there since I think I was the only person who hadn't, um, initially spoken of him as at least one of two candidates that I was leaning towards.
Thank you, Dr. Carol. I appreciate your, your openness and this is hard as we, as we all knew. Um, and, um, you know, it's, it's a good, hard choice. Um, uh, but, but ne- difficult nevertheless. Um. I don't know if, if, um, Member Ross Denny or- I don't know if Member Ross Denny or Dr. Miranda want to make any further comments at this time before we proceed to a vote. You know, you both recommended two candidates that you saw as having strengths and that you would support. And I just want to give you that opportunity to reflect if you have any further comments.
You know, I don't think I have anything new to add. I just would reiterate that I think there's something about servant leadership that speaks to me and speaks to the ability to listen to all voices, regardless of where they are standing. And I think we need that. The other part that I did not highlight when I was speaking about Ms. Murphy, that I keep coming back to, is the ability to tap into the community and the assets in the community, to be able to address issues within the school district that I think we could do more of in our town. You know, the specific example that keeps coming, that I keep going back to is the antisemitic incident. And one of the things that I heard loud and clear is that she sought partnership in the local rabbi to say, how do we go about handling this together? I also heard of, you know, I need to continue to grow and learn alongside my students. So I'm not just going to say, let's do book clubs so young people can discuss the issues and work through this, but I'm going to join a book club too with them. And I think I do get a sense of rolling up your sleeves and just doing. And I think that's the part that I think I keep going back to, Ms. Murphy, as someone who, I just felt like she connected more. I think, you know, Dr. Burrows, no question in my mind that he has the ability to manage change at the systems level. But I keep thinking of the relational aspect of the work and how much we need that. So I think I'm still sort of leaning more towards Ms. Murphy, but could support the candidacy of Dr. Burrows.
I will say just one last thing in closing, and I completely agree with Selena. And I also think that in various ways, all three of our candidates have either spoken to or their reference talked about their ability to connect with people. And I think that's probably why they even made it to this round. They all have very strong opinions about how people should be treated, whether they're the stakeholders within the schools or stakeholders in the community. And have all found ways to successfully engage and get and accomplish things. If anything, it's when we've been able to see a track record of 10 years of being able to do that at a systems level. Granted, it's probably, it's more number of schools, but probably fewer kids that I think will make a difference for Milton. And I really appreciate Ms. Murphy's ability to articulate specifically how she's been able to do it. It definitely came through in her interview. And I also think that the other two candidates were able to demonstrate, whether in their interview or through their references or their packets, their capacity to do these things.
Okay, well, very good. Well, I guess, taking Member White's suggestion, let's try a motion and we'll see where we stand. I'll make a motion. We'll know that Dr. Peter Burrows be appointed Superintendent Milton Public Schools subject to the successful negotiation of a contract of employment mutually agreeable to the candidate and the school committee and signed by both parties or their designees. Do we hear a second?
A second.
Thank you. Take a roll call vote. Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
And Chair Rosemarin, yes. Very good. That is unanimous. Thank you all. What I'd like to do is, I would just go in the other room if we were in person. But given this remote situation, I'm going to turn off my microphone and camera and make a phone call to make an offer. And if you all could bear with us, if you'd like to turn off your microphone and cameras, that would be fine too. And when I'm ready to come back on, I'll turn on my mic. So if you could just stay tuned, we'll be back in a moment. Hi, everyone. If you could come back on. Member White, Dr. Miranda, you guys there? There you are. Fantastic. Well, I spoke with Dr. Burrows and he very happily accepted our offer and wanted me to share with you all how happy he is to move this along and how touched he was by the comments that were made here today. He was listening in. And thank you all for our support. So with that, I will, let me just move down my notes here. Make a motion to adjourn to executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, not to return to open session. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Take a roll call vote. Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Chair Rosemarin, yes. And we will not return to open session. So we will be signing off from here. And you all should have a Google link to get onto our executive session. So I will see you in executive session. Thank you, everyone. Bye-bye.